The special meeting of the joint meeting of the Sedona City Council and the Sedona Fire District Governing Board is called to order. Fudge allegiance.
Fudge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome our guests and our members of the Sedona City Council. And I think it's worthwhile also going around and just doing a quick introduction. So if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask you to start us off.
Scott Johnlue, the mayor of the city.
Ali Ploue, vice mayor.
Brian Pults, city council.
Tim Snethers, executive assistant.
Lance Waldorf, board member.
Diana Christensen, fire board.
Helen McNeil, chair of the Sedona Fire District Board.
Cory Cooperman, clerk of the Sedona Fire Board.
Scott Springett on the board.
Ed Mizulis, fire chief.
Pete Furman, Sedona City Council.
Liz Sedan, city council.
Derek Pfaff, city council.
Let's catch the audience.
Yeah. Can you continue with all staff?
Kathy Foley, please chief.
Josh Matts will be the firefighter, board member, Copper Canyon, and union member.
Oh, Janet Jawo, citizen.
That's only as in the last 24 hours.
Bill Whittington, board council for Sedona Fire.
And we have. Well, welcome, everyone. We're delighted to have this meeting and appreciate it taking place this close to Christmas because I know what everyone's calendars are like. And hopefully, we have a good, successful meeting and just set the precedent for good work going forward. I think at this point, the most important thing that I can say to everyone is that what I hope we come out of today is something that works for all of us, works for the Sedona Fire District, works for the city of Sedona, and gives us a positive place to build on. So I'm looking forward in that spirit of cooperation to lots of questions, lots of communication, sharing of ideas, and exchanges so that we can get to a place where we can move forward. So with that, and I would also ask, Mr. Mayor, would you like to say anything before we move on?
I haven't really prepared anything, but just, I really appreciate the open dialogue that we've had in the past and what we're going to have today. And I look forward to coming to some kind of resolution as soon as possible.
Great. Well, with that, I will turn it over to our fire chief, Mr. Mizulis.
All right. Members of the board, council, city staff, thank you. And I appreciate you all taking the time to do this. As a point of order, she is in a two-hour chair. It's rated for two hours of conversation. So the hope is that we can, we can respect her, her, her health and back pain. So as many, as I believe everybody knows, we met a couple of months ago and left that meeting with, with whittling down opportunities to 401 Jordan Road and the potential of acquisition of properties adjacent to the current Station 4. Since that meeting, we've conducted appraisals of both the private properties, our station proper, and then the 401 Jordan Road property. And I believe you all have had that, you got that information. So, you know, further review, talking to some preliminary conversations with contractors and architects, looking at increased traffic with the parking garage and the through, the throughway with Forest Road. We're still in a position where 401 Jordan is really a good option for us. And further cementing that is, is the fact that one of the adjacent property owners is steadfast in his resolve that he has no interest whatsoever in selling his property. And so it would really create an environment where if we were to go to the route of attempting to acquire it, it would add years and dollars to our process that we don't believe we have in the interest of public safety and moving forward with our capital improvement needs. So that's all I have as an opener. And I guess I just would request we open for dialogue and to see where everybody lands since the last meeting and everybody's had a chance to digest the process, if you will.
Well, I'll be pleased to start off. So it's, as our chief has said, the reason for particularly our desire to, to build our Station, Station 4 on Jordan Road is, for one, it gives us better access out of the station and to, and to get to the people in need. It increases our response time a bit because we don't have to stop and have some of our staff hold back the pedestrian traffic or also deal with the cars coming down Forest Road. The other thing is that, Chief, I believe you mentioned before, you know, in terms of our build, it's a relatively flat lot. And so our cost in building definitely decreases. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Compared to pretty much anywhere else. Yes. So those, those are my offerings to the conversation that, that, that really point to the value of, of the parking lot on Jordan Road.
Can I ask a question, Madam Chair?
Yes.
So if you're, you feel that 401 Jordan is the best location for the firehouse, the new firehouse, what is your plan for the existing station and any of the surrounding lands?
If I may. And I, I am operating under the impression that the city isn't interested in that particular property. So if I am incorrect, so if, if at the end of the day, we were to maintain ownership of that property, there are some certainties. The one certainty is that we have to remain, we have to maintain ownership of a part of that property for that tower. I think it's pretty clear that we're not going to find a spot in Uptown to build another tower, ever. We also have some grandfathered FCC communication agreements that are, what I understand, would be null and void if we attempted to move the tower because of its legacy placement. So that being said, it makes the property less desirable. We spitballed some ideas and, again, this has not been discussed with the board. It's just inter-staff conversations. I, I envisioned, we, as we've mentioned before, the fire district doesn't own, other than our stations, we don't have a, we don't have a list of properties that we own. We don't have any real estate. So what I, what I would envision is, if you don't know, we have a Station 8 that's down, right as you leave town, at the bottom of the hill, right past the Loop Road. Currently, that station is a single bay and it's used for our IT division. And it, I believe that with the potential growth in this region, there's going to be a point certain in the near future, we're going to have to evaluate putting some equipment at that station and staffing it, you know? And so we'll need a spot for IT and some different support services. I would, I would envision a beautification and, you know, addition of a sidewalk and some landscape to mute and beautify the front of the building and potentially use that, do a tenant improvement on one of those structures, maybe probably have to remove one and then do a tenant improvement on the other and move some of our support services there. And I'm not talking an, an active mechanic shop where a guy's wrenching and blowing a ratchet all day, but potentially some of our administrative functions, our community risk functions, we have, it gives us some flexibility. And this is, this is where I go off track sometimes and think 15, 20 years down the road. But if, if all pans out and we, we have the opportunity to improve our situation with our Station 4, we then have a, a need for our Station 5 in Oak Creek Canyon. And based on the timeline, by the time those two are done, this station's going to be in excess of 40 years old. And so we're going to, we're going to need to evaluate opportunities to update this place. Our, our capital out 15 years with maintaining that property and beautifying it in alignment with the Uptown character ideas would allow us to restructure some of our support services in a way that keeps it central to the district and isn't a negative impact to the, the visual piece of the Uptown corridor. And that's, again, hasn't been deeply discussed. It's just some staff ideas, but we would just abandon it and slap some paint on it and hope it looks pretty. There would be a thoughtful approach to improving its appearance and usefulness.
Chief, I appreciate that, especially the long-range vision that you have. It's very interesting, and I appreciate that. I know that somebody had contacted me with a concern that you were just going to sell it for a commercial entity. And I explained to them some of the issues, but having this mentioned here, I think it was very important. So thank you.
And to that point, I can't speak to what a board's going to do in five, eight years, but, but I can say with some confidence, I'm not a, I'm not a city planner and I'm not a property development guy, but with an RF tower and, and what space would remain on that property, I, I don't see it being viable for multi, multi-use housing. And if anything, somebody'd make it the Firehouse Brew Pub or something, and then that would be another restaurant in Uptown. But other than that, I, like I said, I can't speak for this or a future board, but I don't think, looking at its appraised value right now, if we further cut it up to ensure we had space to maintain our tower for our taxpayers, I don't, I don't see a true added value to really getting aggressive with attempting to commercialize it. But as I said, it wouldn't be up to me.
Well, thank you.
Other comments and questions?
Yes.
I guess stating what sounds like the obvious, then, your desire is to buy the 401 Jordan property. You're not looking to hope that we would want to do a land swap or in any other way, just you would like to obtain 401 Jordan from the city and be able to build the firehouse there?
That, that is correct. There, there are some small opportunities with some of the property we have, but I, I think the cleanest would be to just get the property.
I support that. I think we should be clean and simple, sell the property and 401 Jordan might, thinking about that as evolved since our last meeting, to quote my friend, Mr. Furman.
The evolution?
Yes. And, and I'm comfortable if we, you know, arrive at a mutually agreeable price based on the appraisals that we have, that that would be the, the best. We have some property we've been looking at in another location, and we could acquire that property with the proceeds from the sale. That would be a better location and, and use for us.
Other comments or questions?
I like the simple sale approach. When I saw the appraisals for some of the existing land, I was thinking you were proposing a swap. I was just wondering what the city is going to do, possibly do with any of that land. But no, I do, I like the idea of just a straight sale, simple, avoid condemnation, avoid all of the complications that would come with expanding the existing site.
And I, I want to clarify, the, the purpose of getting all properties appraised was because that, those are the properties we left the last meeting with, on, on the table. And I, I didn't want to come back and have a conversation without knowing true value because I think, because if we just appraised our, our public properties and then there was some conversation about the private, then it would be a do-over. And so I was just trying to get the totality of it so we had a good picture.
And I didn't have all that background. It was the time before.
So.
Any other questions, comments?
I guess, thanks Chair. Chief, you had mentioned active or repurposing, reactivating that building, and you said a lot of positive words, but I, I am thoughtful about, you know, if, if you relocated, we'd activate 401 Jordan with the fire station, but I'm worried about the current, deactivating a property that's there. You said that you had had some use, but when would you be able to actually implement that and repurpose it?
Initial, an initial blush. Again, we've had pie in the sky conversations with staff, hey, the what-ifs. And it is my belief that the, the building that's not the fire station, we refer to it as the annex, it, it was purpose-built by Coconial County as the first jail in town. And it, it is a good space for our IT division, for example. You know, we've got our radio, radio folks and in our IT, that would be a facelift to the building to, to align with the character area of Uptown and, and a, a pretty mild tenant improvement of the interior. It's already kind of set up as office space. So with board approval, I would, I would imagine that piece could happen in concert with development of a station if it, if it's financially feasible. Now, the fire station, of course, we would have to build the other station, vacate it, and then, then by then, I believe we could have a solid plan for it. But so essentially, the annex would be beautified and then do some work toward on the front, and then the, the station would follow suit after, after the new station is constructed, if that's what happens. But obviously couldn't do much to it until we get the knuckleheads out.
But if I'm not mistaken, Chief, we, there is the possibility, once they're out, of using that space, whether it's for our community risk reduction or
Correct.
A variety of ways existing space could be used.
And so, again, I haven't had an engineer deep dive it yet because it's, there's a cost and, and until we have a solution, I didn't want to do it. But preliminarily, the concerns about our current Station 4 is the, is the dynamic loading of that building, the fire trucks coming in and out constantly in the, in the subfloor and all that. In addition to that, hundreds of miles of cabling that supported a dispatch and primary ESAP center for decades and, and in a building that wasn't built to support that infrastructure. So preliminary views from some contractors is that if, if that station was, had a tenant improvement to better suit it for a, a static loading of an office space, we could maintain the character modeling Uptown structures and use that as, again, like an administrative or support services facility.
No, to be fair, no, that's in the budget yet. The board really hasn't even talked about its potential uses or when that might occur.
And see, that, please stop me, but so in the budget and budgeted, so we have, we, the fire board has worked diligently in the past almost decade to build up capital for the known projects that we have. So while that specific project as a TI is not defined, it could become part of the, the request for quote that we do when we build the station or a part of the Station 4 project or redo. And that would be internal conversations, but again, there, there are, we have a fair amount of cash flows to support these capital projects because we've known about them for many, many years.
I have a question.
Yes.
Madam Chair. As the vice mayor said, I, I agree with her on that. So, but my question is, once we settle on a price, and I don't know if that could be discussed here or executive session for all of us together, how that would work. Kurt, do you have any preference on how that would play out?
Oh, the city is going to have to do property, which is going to have to post notice and hold a public hearing, and it's going to have to be for the fair market value. So I don't think there's anything really to discuss on that.
Okay.
So the appraisal.
Your appraisal.
Unless we've had any issues with the appraisal.
Okay. I just wanted, that's what I thought, but I wanted to be sure. So that makes it even cleaner, can move forward faster. Assuming that all plays out, it could, a month, June, May, April, next week, I don't know. What would be the timeframe for you to be able to begin? You'd have to have an architect come in and do all those designs, of course, right? Do you have any idea what, what the timeframe, frame would be?
But when it is posted at a public hearing and the intent to sell is, is made public, we would then initiate an RFQ process and start to, start to align. We've already got committee work going on for the as-needs for the station, and we would start an RFQ process and speaking with multiple architects and the, the fire station contractors in the state. We're looking at six to eight months of, of planning and getting in the weeds, and then, and then we would start, you know, we got to do demo. And if it was 401 Jordan, find somebody to take that vault out, which is a little process. And then, as soon as demo's done and then, you know, the devil's in the details, does the contract, do the building contractor also facilitate the demo? Do we split out the RFQs? That all will happen. I would be comfortable lining that stuff up if there was, if it was publicly made available or made aware that we were intent to buy or intent to sell. So that's, I'm famous for long answers to your short questions, but in, in Ed's brain, this time next year, we'd be, hopefully, we'd be digging.
Chief, I'm sure, I think you mentioned it during our last meeting, but you said you'd be very comfortable doing outreach to the community in Uptown?
I have spoken with business owners and longtime residents of the Uptown character area, and I, I have not, nobody's indicated to me they would be opposed to a station there. Now, that doesn't mean there's somebody that's not going to come out of the woodworks, but I've spoken with some, some of the more vocal residents of Uptown. I'll leave it at that, and they, they are in support of the station movement.
Fabulous. All right. That's good for me.
So I have a question for Mr. Christensen. Your response on the, on the fair market value, I'm, I'm curious. I'm just wanting to understand why, and bear with me, I'm a little new to this, but it would seem to me that we're talking about two governmental agencies, and there would be the ability to have a conversation between those agencies about the price. Does it have to be the fair market value that you would sell to someone from outside? Please do a little bit of education.
Sure. Thank you.
Thanks, Chair and Board and Council. So unlike the fire districts, which actually have a provision in state law that allows them to, it's, I can't remember the exact words, Bill does, but it's really broad.
75%.
Well, 75%, there's also one that you can just basically exchange value or, or property for anything that you deem to be in the best interest of the fire district. There's some very broad language there. Unlike fire districts, the cities are very limited by state law. And up until just a few, the law was just passed this last year until September, we, any property above 1.5 million, we would have had to get approval from the voters to sell property. Now, they've changed it up to 15 million and then we have a public hearing, but it does state in Title IX that we can't sell it for less than the fair market value.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, I'll look into it again, just to, to make sure there, you know, might be exceptions for other political subdivisions. If that includes fire districts or not, I can, I can double-check that to see if there's a more opportunity there, but I don't believe there is right now.
Thank you. Well, I mean, do whatever research, obviously. We want to both have the best part, but thank you. Other questions and comments?
Well, I'd like to ask again to Mr. Christensen, what, the timeline, because we, in order to build, start building by December of next year or possibly January following, what is the timeline on the city's end for being able to sell?
So it's just notice and then publication and a paper and then a public hearing. So that can all be done within 30 days. So there's not some drawn-out time, timeline necessarily.
And the reason I ask that is our hope is that we could start to build at the end of the year. And, and so if there is, ends up being agreement about selling the property to us, doing it sooner would really be appreciated.
Yes. Thank you.
So Kurt, we can provide direction today as council if we desire, correct?
Correct. So it's, this is a gendized for direction to staff so that we could then start the process. No legal action will be done today. That'd be at a subsequent future meeting date where council could approve the, the sale.
Okay. I'm, I'm open, as is the vice mayor and mayor, to proceeding and providing that direction. Question brought in to my little counselors, since I wasn't here. I saw some older materials that talked about possibility there being some shared use of the site. Is that something we would discuss at a later date? Is that off the table? Is that something that's been given in consideration? I mean, I saw materials that talked about public restrooms, visitor center, transit stops. Do you guys need the entire site or?
So for, for Jordan Road, yes, indications are we need the entire site. That being said, an externally accessible restroom, I think would be a possibility. But a lot of that language came from the, the other parking lot off of Schneble and because of its shape. And, and in the, in the city's Uptown character area documentation, they, they'd indicate that eventually we wanted a restroom at that Schneble site. So that's where that came up.
Okay.
We, we, we do intend to incorporate a community room at that station so that it'd be available to the Uptown residents for different meetings and things. And then there was some more talk about potentially other, other city services, but the parking garage kind of captured a lot of the, the needs that were indicated for the Uptown area with restrooms and a, a meeting room and the PPD and stuff, so.
Okay. Thank you.
You have an opinion, Derek, that you want to share as far as staff on the direction?
I'm in favor of proceeding.
Perfect. All right. Thank you for sharing that. Melissa?
I'm in favor of proceeding.
Pete?
I'm in favor of doing the analysis. I'm not going to use that word proceeding, but.
How about evolution?
Evolution's a good word. Yeah. You know, I, I, I do think, and I'm looking forward to a staff presentation about sort of the impacts that, and, and staff analysis at some point about the impacts, we'll potentially be losing a potentially tax-generating property in town. You know, there are other impacts that we need to consider other than just the price of fair market value.
Okay. Madam Chair, if I may, so, Annette, you have direction from five of us to move forward?
Twelve, six.
Six. Well, we don't, Kathy's not him, but Pete's, yeah, he moved forward, but he wants to do it more analysis. I don't know if there's any council support to do more analysis. So if you want, we could discuss that because I think this fire district should know today, if possible, or we put it off to another meeting where, where we are. Because if we're going to do more analysis, that could take 30, 60 days, and that would be putting them on hold.
I understand what you're saying, but we've had very limited conversation with our staff about sort of the implications of, you know, transfer to property and designated use like this in our Uptown. And I would hope that in our normal course of business, that we would actually have some staff input as to the value of doing this.
We had that pretty much at the last meeting that we had at City Hall.
But we're, we had multiple, we had multiple balls in the air.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chairperson McNeil. I think it would be doable for the staff to provide some memo or some information in the packet for the public hearing for determining if you're going to sell the property, right? So, January's pretty full. Is February acceptable to both entities to schedule that?
Do you foresee a separate meeting for the city before we come back to the, not to use the fire district's time for something that we're going to be discussing? I'm open to either way, to have staff give that presentation, and then we decide. I think we have just enough votes here to move forward as far as this process.
I think it would all be in the same meeting that you're holding, the public hearing on the sale of the property. And then if at that time, the council decides they don't want to sell yet or delay the decision on the sale, you could do it at that time. But it seems from the staff perspective, we would prepare it all for the first, for the meeting on the potential sale, instead of having a separate meeting about the impacts.
Okay.
But again, up to you, if you feel that the council would like to have two separate discussions, you know, staff will do whatever the council would like. But it seems like together in the one meeting is enough.
And can we, Kurt, can we have that meeting with the fire district as well and have a joint public meeting to discuss? So it doesn't need to be just amongst ourselves at a public meeting. And they could be in the audience, of course, but I'd rather have the participation.
Mayor, you can have another joint meeting, but it's not needed at all.
Oh, I knew that.
So, yeah, it's up to the council if they want to have that joint or not. There's no need for it to be joint. Just the city will have to just publish and post notice ahead of time, and then they can have it for the public hearing, and then they actually take it that same day. So it'd be a regular council meeting, would probably be easier. So it might be harder to have the fire district there.
Very good.
I think it's fair to say that, I'm going to speak to my colleagues, that the sooner that we can do that meeting with all due process, the better, because we'd like to be able to move forward, need to be able to move forward. So I appreciate what you're saying, but hopefully, we can do that as quickly as possible.
Sure. And because we need to give the, excuse me, 30 days' notice, even if we do it now at the end of December, it would still be the end of January. And so I'm not sure that scheduling it for the first meeting in February is really that much more of a delay.
That's fine.
If I may ask, if, when the city's preparing their memo and/or analysis, if there's anything you need from us as the fire district, just use me as point of contact, and I'll get whoever involved that we need to get involved.
We can all go on a field trip.
I've been able to see it in the vision there.
Holly, I knew I cut you off. I'm sorry.
I just, I heard there's five, so there's a majority of the council that wants to move forward with the sale of this property. Is that correct?
That's right.
Yes.
So we have a majority.
Okay. Great.
We have to go through a public process, and we can't vote on that. Our vote today isn't a valid vote, right? But you have the sentiment. So if that's enough comfort for you to do, to take measures on your end.
It allows us to move the needle. And obviously, not going to commit to an architect on a property we don't own, but I can definitely, it gives me enough information and confidence to act on behalf of the board and move forward with some of the process.
What I'm concerned about, Holly, is that with Pete's due diligence, what he's asking for, he wants to know about, you know, what financial businesses or loss of revenue, is that what the term you used?
Certainly an aspect we should think about.
Right. But would that change our opinion, say?
What, excuse me, what loss of revenue?
This is what, this, this is, well, future, you're talking about in the future, on whether it's a housing or it's a commercial establishment, it would be built there. And I'm perfectly fine with moving forward, but I want to give deference to Council Furman and his request. I just don't, and where I was going a few minutes ago, is I don't know if there's support to move to that extra step. If there's more than four of us, or four or more, that want to just move forward, I'm ready to do that. If we have four people ready to do that, not wanting to go the extra step, then we should just give the direction to staff, and then the fire district has their direction, and they'll be more comfortable. Because should somebody decide, well, we're going to lose that revenue or whatever it is, maybe somebody would change their mind. I don't know. I can't speak for anybody else, of course. But they need a hard and fast decision.
I'm ready to give them a hard and fast decision.
If I, if I may clarify, so based on the 30-day notice, et cetera, really, the next time for the city to meet and appropriately vote on this matter would be in first of February, correct? That's the practicality of it. Not putting you on the spot, but it is, does the potential exist for city staff to develop this analysis by that date? Is that an appropriate timeframe? So really, we're not, we're not losing steam, if you will, if we do a quick analysis and then have the meeting beginning of February? Because we're going to have to have it beginning of February anyhow. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that.
Melissa?
Karen? Mr. Mayor, whoever pointed. My remembrance, which might be faulty, from when we met last, was Cynthia, you presented a whole portfolio, shall we say, of options of what we could do, either if we ended up with the old property, or if 401 on around, what we would do with that, plus all the other properties we got rid of. At that point in time, it seems to me you talked about all the things that we could possibly do there. So as part of the public forum and presentation, I would assume we will see what could be put there should the city decide to develop the property on their own versus the firehouse being there. So I'm not sure what other analysis there is. And I don't remember honestly that there was any commercial properties that we really talked about there at all, as far as the city allowing development of commercial property. We'd had a conversation around housing, and there were several of us who thought that was really not a great place for us to put additional affordable housing. There was open space that we talked about, which, you know, there are some of us who think that's pretty hot up there already, and some open space would be kind of a good thing. But that aside, that can be outweighed by the safety of Uptown, which would be the firehouse, right? So, and you know that our residents are particularly concerned in Uptown around fire safety. Whatever the cause of the fire might be, they're concerned about fire safety. So I would just say we need to proceed. I would assume that all the good work that Cynthia and other members of staff had done would be part of that package that we would see presented in February. And at that time, we can have the discussion around whether or not we believe that, from the perspective of the city, we're willing to do the land selling, because none of those other items that were there are things that we believe we, as a city, would want and that those would outweigh a modern, up-to-date firehouse. So I just wanted to throw that out there and see if I remembered that. You wouldn't know at all, whether or not I remembered that correctly, so.
And I remembered exactly like that. Karen, you want to add something?
Unless staff tells me there's an undiscovered gold mine on the property, I don't know if they're going to tell us anything that's going to change our minds. So copper, whatever. Whatever. But I just, we know we're foregoing, potentially foregoing, commercial housing. But I just, I don't think there's really anything the staff's going to tell me that's going to make me think the firehouse is a lesser use of this property.
All right. So what I'm hearing, the direction of staff, is I don't know if the staff needs to take the extra effort to get, do that analysis, when right now, we have five of us here that are willing to just move forward. So you don't have to take that staff time and all that energy. We want to move forward. Pete is the only one that wishes to have more information, and we're not supporting that. So the next meeting will not be discussing the analysis. We'll just do what's legally needed to move forward with the process. Kurt?
And include authority in that.
Yeah, right, yes. No, of course. Let's talk about the additional item that Council Furman was talking about.
Get the calendar to see what the exact date is.
I think that'll be great.
Have you already read it?
Well, I think unless there is something that someone feels we need to add at this point, we have a potential future meeting for you all to meet to discuss this. I'm sure there will be conversations to take place informally in the meantime. But I want to thank the council for coming to Station 1 today, joining us, and for your time and energy, and for your attention to the needs of the Sedona Fire District. We really appreciate what you're doing and investing in something near and dear to our hearts. I want to thank the chief for your work to get us to this point, and to thank one and all for the time today. And with that, I think our meeting is formally adjourned.
Have a great holiday, everyone.
Yes, happy holidays. Yes.
Dogs have food.
And lots of it.
Always better.
Especially the firehouse.
That's right, it's not.
Guys around here, they're looking.